Well, I made sure to email them yesterday also, so they had their.
Good morning, welcome to the Board of Supervisors.
For November 8th, 2016, the meeting's called to order, and can we please have the roll call?
Supervisor Floyd. Supervisor Wong. Supervisor Bennett.
Happily here.
Yeah.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
And Supervisor Parks.
Here. And I know Supervisor Zaragoza isn't well this morning, hope he gets well soon, and I look forward to seeing him at our next meeting. This morning, we have the honor of having a presentation of the colors for the Pledge of Allegiance with the Eric Huberth Post 11-395, Ventura Veterans of Foreign Wars here in, actually, the Caneo Valley. Delighted that you're here, we have Gary Erland with the Post Commander, an Army veteran. He served in Vietnam, as did Bob Harper, Post Quartermaster and Marine Corps veteran, also served in Vietnam. And VFW Post 11-395 honors Eric Huberth, Captain Eric Huberth. He was a Thousand Oaks native's son who bravely served his country as an Air Force Officer, pilot in 1970 in Cambodia, and whose name is honored on Line 33 of the Vietnam Wall in Washington, DC. VFW Post 11-395 conducts an annual wreath laying and flag retirement ceremony at the Eric Huberth Memorial at the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza to honor their fallen brethren, a very nice tribute to him, to have his, the post named after him. So at this time, I welcome the, our gentlemen veterans to please come down and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Military police officers, fire department, veterans, and salute.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, gentlemen. Thank you. So we have Veterans Day right around the corner. It's nice to be able to have our veterans here. We so much appreciate the work that you do for veterans throughout our county. The Eric Huberth Memorial, it's interesting, he was shot down, and of the missing in action soldiers that the city had honored with the planting of the tree, all came back except for him, and it was true, his tree died, but they took the wood from the tree and they used it for this memorial, which is just very poignant. Thank you very much for doing that. We'll go on, and I know we're going to have a presentation, a time-certain presentation on Veterans Day today, too. At this time, we'll go to our minutes, and this is for the November 4th, 2016 Board of Supervisors meeting. We have a motion. And a second, if we could please vote. And now we'll go to our agenda review with our CEO, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Chair Parks. Item 19, Public Works Agency, public hearing regarding the adoption of an ordinance for augmented pirate transportation impact mitigation fee. We request that item be continued to December 6, 2016, at 10:30 a.m. Item 21, Probation Agency, authorization for the Chair of the Board to sign a letter of support for the Pew MacArthur Results First Initiative. A PowerPoint has been submitted. Item 22, Resource Management, public hearing regarding the consideration of proposed amendments of tract map 5175 for redevelopment outside of the designated building envelope. A board letter in Exhibits 1 through 6 have been submitted. Item 25, Public Works, approval of the Fifth Amendment to the Contract for VCMC Hospital Replacement Wing, request removal from the agenda. And then there's an addendum agenda, a regular item 31, CEO's Office, authorization for the Chair of the Board to send a letter to the Ventura County Medical and Managed Care Commission regarding organizational priorities at Gold Coast Health Plan. And that's it.
Okay, are there any other requests to amend the agenda, otherwise a motion to approve the agenda as revised? We have a motion, a second. And one more vote to go. Thank you, and that passes unanimously. At this time, then, as I mentioned, we do have an opportunity to have our moment of inspiration, and we again have Gary Erland and Bob Harper, if you'd like to come on up, if, again, both veterans of the Vietnam War. And welcome, and thank you so much for doing our colors this morning.
Our pleasure, thank you very much. I'm Gary Erland, and I am the commander of our post, as it is made aware, everyone aware of, and what we do here with the Veterans of Foreign Wars is support our veterans. Here in Ventura County, Santa Barbara County, and LA County, we have many thousands of veterans, and actually, in the state of California, we have more veterans than any other state within the 50. One of the things that we do every year is our Veterans Stand Down, which is here in Ventura County at the National Guard Armory on Arundel. And currently, we have done that for 24 consecutive years. We are now working on our 25th for next year, and this is in support of homeless and disabled veterans. Locally, we also support the Veterans Hospital in Sepulveda and also West LA. We make trips there generally about every other week to support such basic items, hand cream, shampoo, even small personal packs of Kleenexes that unfortunately are very hard to obtain with funds from the VA. I was just there a week ago, we dropped off many of these type of items, and one of the most basic items, AA batteries for the clocks. All of their clocks are battery-driven, and we can't afford batteries, so we at the VFW do that. To give an idea of what we actually have, the total actually estimated living veterans right now is about 2,244,583, of which, we got 39,000. Okay, a lot of veterans, and that's a lot of work. And if any of you would like to come and help, we are always welcoming, doors are open. We have a website, please come and see us. And if you have any questions, I'm sure that Linda, Ms. Parks, can get to our information, and as she said, in June, on Flag Day, we are out there at the Civic Arts Plaza. And if there's any questions you have, we'll be glad to floor them, or glad for you to floor them, and I would answer them, but I think we're just about out of time.
Well, thank you so much. Getting that list of items that should be donated, that'd be great, we could pass that around and get that information out and help you collect items to donate.
Matter of fact, I can drop it off at your office.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, thank you so much for what you do.
Thank you.
And now, we can go on to, I don't believe we have any cards, so consent items. Oh, you do have a card? Thank you for getting, and this is, again, just for the consent items 11 through 15, and then we'll go to public comments.
Oh, sorry, that's not.
That's okay, no, it's great to have it. And so, do we have a motion for items 11 through 15? Yes.
Certainly, I'll put forward a motion. Just like to comment under item 13, which is a Safe Routes to School Master Plan for this SCAG grant application to encourage, and I will certainly contact, make sure we have letters of support coming from our parts of the community, particularly from our Superintendent of County Schools.
Yes, thank you, and I, I know that it's, I think it was just $100,000, but every dollar counts when we're trying to provide safer routes to school. If we could all please vote on those consent items? And that passes unanimously also. At this time now, we'll go to public comments, and I do have a couple of public comment cards. Monica Lindsay, followed by Janice Dallas, and then Joe Kyle.
Good morning. I'm here before you as a member of Sesbee Creek Collective and a recently displaced employee. I don't think any of you have any idea the damage that was caused by the raid to our collective last week. 20 people are out of work, but you know what? We're undeterred. The failure to responsibly regulate and embrace cannabis a week before the vote was set to happen today. It could go recreational, and you guys will have a flood of problems on your hands because you have failed to address them. I don't know who directed the VCSD to do whatever action they did, but it was uncalled for, over the top, and illegal. Civil asset forfeiture and the way that they came in and stole $200,000 worth of medicine from sick people who collectively were allowed to have it, possess it, and give it to one another through the collective system. Perhaps none of you are really familiar with the way that the collective system is run, operated, and is effective. Until sensible regulations were put in place, collectives were told that they would be left alone as long as they stayed compliant. I can tell you that the people that get medicine through collectives have to be checked, their paperwork, their driver's licenses. There are safeguards in place to ensure that the people that are supposed to get the medicine are the only ones getting it. The scene that unfolded before my eyes the other day as I watched the cops kick in the back door of my friend's house, my boss's house, they stole her pets. They went in and took her dogs and her cats, and they impounded them. I'm sure they've been watching for a while, they know we're animal lovers. Heck, we rescued whole colonies of feral cats so Oxnard didn't have to. We went and spayed and neutered them and trapped and released them, removing a burden from that community. We do a lot of little things that are unseen for our community. Those donations that the gentleman was just speaking about, that would be helpful, we do things like that. We would love to do more things like that, but instead, the Ventura County Sheriff's Department just set us back quite a bit. They stole from us, and it's being allowed. They also came through my office and took pictures of my children. They made little drive-bys past their school. This time last year, I was balled from chemo, having to fend off attacks from CPS, asking me how I medicate and how often, knowing darn good and well that that information is protected by HIPAA, and they're not even allowed to ask. I've started speaking out on a lot more than just safe access to cannabis, because I'm a caregiver for three children, including two that are medically fragile. I can't help but draw the correlation between the uptick in my activism efforts and the action taken against our collective. It won't stand. We're allowed to be here. We're allowed to help sick people. They stole the only lab-tested medicine that I trust to keep me cancer-free. Gold Coast will not pay for my Tamoxifen. I don't know why or how they choose which medicines that they won't cover. My son's antiarrhythmia medicine gets placed on a rotating list of medicines they won't cover. When I come to you, still wearing this shirt, this is all I have left. They literally took everything but the shirts off our backs, and we still have sick people on hospice that are calling in, trying to get medicine. Where is the compassion for Ventura County? You promised you would help us. You told us that complaint collectives would be left alone, and you lied. I don't know who told Sheriff Dean to do what he did, but the scope and the maliciousness of it was uncalled for. I'm just a mom. I'm a mom that started out in the Welfare to Work Program, and I found that job when I was mindlessly searching Craigslist as I was directed to do. The Workforce Development Board and the Regional Plan for Job Creation left out a billion-dollar industry. Why?
Thank you for coming and speaking this morning, Ms. Lindsay.
All I have to do is be here, so you can expect to see me at every meeting until you guys sensibly regulate, because guess what? Now all I have is time on my hands. I already went and refiled for unemployment, as I'm directing all the other people that I work with, too, and I couldn't help but notice that one of the items on there is a plea from one of the farms that's closing, directing you guys to a state retraining program.
I'm sorry, but we do have other speakers, and we do, it's good to hear the implications, and we'll see what happens with the vote today.
We'll see.
Yes, our next speaker, then, is Janice Dallas, followed by Joe Kyle.
Okay, state your name, I'm Janice Dallas, as you have said. I'm rather furious at the raid on Sesbee Street Collective, which is a very law-abiding collective, did everything they could. There are things I wanted to say, but she said a lot. I believe this was a power grab, meant to intimidate, meant to ruin the group, and the timing of it is extremely suspicious, being just before an election where Prop 64 is up. That's part of what makes me furious. The other thing is all the pets being taken, and for her to be in a cell for 24 hours without food or water, smacks of the war. This is why I'm furious. As far as my own situation, I have small fibromyalgia peripheral neuropathy, which is a disease of the nervous system, incurable, and it gives, leads to excruciating pain. When my medicines, pharma, weren't doing the job anymore, and I tried alternative therapies and all sorts of things, my pain center doctor sent, "Why don't you try marijuana?" I had been resistant, but at that point, you know, I had to try something. I've always grown up as a law-abiding citizen, I vote, I do everything right, and I thought I was still doing everything right, and now I'm, I'm a little bit of a problem because the medication that can stop my flare-ups in 15 minutes is not there anymore. And in order to get anything, I'm going to have to go to LA to one of the dispensaries. I've been to one dispensary in Northern California once before, and there were people smoking pot now outside, and it was rather scary. There are hundreds of us in this collective. This is not a small collective, and anyone who wasn't going to vote on Prop 64, I think, is now going to, and they're going to vote yes. You have now made enemies of a lot of people. I think I just can't believe what the sheriff's office is doing. I read about all the other collectives that have been raided and found that the reason for them did not exist. I'm very glad men from Shangri-La did sue and got, got the judgment. That leaves it open for a lot of other collectives to go and do the same thing, and I think it was a great waste of people and money from the state to go and do this against a law-abiding firm, collective of patients, caregivers, and, well, I still got a minute, but I'm just, I'm very, very angry, and it's not doing good things to my blood pressure, so, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to, I just want to express that this board has sent a very clear message to our staff that we want to make sure that we have regulations that are in place right after, you know, after this election, that we'll, we'll make sure that medical use of marijuana is something that, of cannabis, is something that people can have safe, reliable, and easy access to. I am listening carefully to the things that you said, I've already sent some texts, I want to get more information about this, but your comments about safe, reliable access to cannabis are not falling on deaf ears. We want that, we've committed to that, and we're going to work hard at that. It may not be at the pace that everybody wants, but that is certainly what we're driving towards, and I just want you to hear that. I know it's very frustrating for you right now, but.
I want the raids to stop. And, what was the other thing? While you were speaking, something came into my head, which has just gone out of it again.
We're here.
Oh, well. All right, some background. I came here two years ago from Massachusetts. In Massachusetts, there's a witch hunt going on. For opiates, any other drugs, marijuana, you name it. They okayed marijuana three years ago, and now they're just getting dispensaries, well, they didn't lay as long as California, but still. Everyone in the administration who could put a tax on did, they made it extremely hard, that was the other thing I was going to say, that if you put taxes on this medicine, high taxes, very high taxes, there's going to be a lot of people who can't afford it because their medical bills are so high, or that they're retired. Now, we're retired, but my husband planned well. That worries me, it just plain worries me. And I vote, and I don't want to stay in the shadows anymore, because it doesn't get you anywhere, and you need to speak up so that you will know that there's an awful lot of people out there that are, it's a hornet's nest that you just stirred up.
Let me just also say, Ms. Dallas, that, and to the rest of the people, that on December 6, we are going to have a, at 3 o'clock here in this boardroom, we're going to have a whole thing on the marijuana usage, what we're doing, land use, everything. It's an opportunity for everybody to come, so everybody should, should be here.
I will.
At 3 o'clock, at 3 o'clock.
I will be here if I can.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
John Kyle, and then followed by Daniel Chavez Jr.
Might be a little bit interesting on that, but it's Joe Kyle. But so, I'm a resident of Ventura County, Newbury Park. With the raid on Sesbee Creek, there's a lot of patients being denied access, as other people have said. The biggest thing is safe access, just in general, delivery services, dispensaries, whatever it may be. Patients cannot always get to LA to be able to get that. The, back in May, the representative from the Department of Health said that Ventura County had the largest enrollment for the county cards, so I just don't see how we can see those definitive numbers and not go for safe access. When you don't regulate, it drastically empowers the black market. I'm very glad to hear that you guys are, have the initiatives drafted or talking about it, but on that actual draft ordinance for today's date, it only has an overview of recreational marijuana tentative initiative, that's for December 6, and on the very bottom, not filed yet and no date, it says, "Received and filed report regarding the proposed ordinance association with regulation of medical marijuana in unincorporated Ventura County," and that has no date. So I'm just wondering if it's recreational marijuana that we're voting on today, why is not medical being discussed as well? The, Sesbee Creek was following the 2008 Attorney General Guidelines as best as they could, which was written out by Jerry Brown. Jerry Brown passed MCRSA, which is why all the bans are in place today. Now, if Prop 64 passes today, in most other cases, in Colorado, Washington, it quadrupled the amount of consumer base. And so, if we don't come forward with responsible regulation, all it's doing is empowering the black market. And I don't think any of us here want that. I think that's it, with everything else that you said. So, I just hope that we have a responsible path forward, and that we can actually regulate responsibly. So, thank you.
And as mentioned, we are very supportive of seeing that people who need it for medical use do get it, and, and just what you said, we need to regulate it responsibly. Thank you for your comments this morning.
Okay, it's still going, so one second, the.
Yes.
Time is the issue that people don't have here. We're dealing with cancer patients.
Right.
Time is luxury.
Thank you, Joe, Kyle. Last speaker, Daniel Chavez Jr.
Good morning, Madam, excuse me, good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors, residents of Ventura County, and staff. My name is Daniel Chavez Jr., a proud born and raised resident of the city of Oxnard and Ventura County. I'm also a candidate for this election. We finally made it down to the end, which feels like the longest election cycle ever. Today, thousands of residents across our nation will be casting their votes for the next president, for votes on councilmen, mayors, supervisors, commissioners, and the only thing that I can say is that we need to ensure that we're electing the right people that will represent our communities and represent our residents in the right way. A few weeks ago, I addressed my city's Commission on Homelessness. Homelessness is a chronic epidemic that is sweeping across our nation. I am a bus operator out of LA County, driving for LA Metro. In LA, you see a long Skid Row and other areas of the city and county, a lot of tents because people are living on the streets, and not just individuals, but. And not just individuals, but families as well. We are now seeing that it's starting to become somewhat of the norm here in Ventura County. And because of that, and because of running for election in my city, I came up with a four-part plan that brings four different organizations together to work collectively in order to address the situation. It won't solve it, but it'll address it. That involves the city, nonprofit, job training, and the CalVet. We all know that many of our homeless tend to be mentally unstable, and as well as veterans. We need to provide that support to them. But unfortunately, a lot of residents feel, NIMBY, not in my backyard, that they don't want to help. The main thing that I heard was that the county may start sending all their people to the city of Oxnard if we start taking a proactive step towards addressing homelessness. I believe as the supervisors, you guys are our county leaders, and we need to start working together with our local council and the county supervisors and staff to try to address this. The last thing that I want to talk about is Prop 64. A few weeks ago, I had the opportunity to sit and speak with the CEO of Sespe for about an hour, hour and a half. I addressed my concerns about how I don't want my city or my county to turn like LA's. After speaking with her, and her addressing all my questions and concerns, and doing my own research, that this is actually something that I support. But I want the record to show that I don't support the recreational use, but I do support the medical use. For years, my grandmother, who passed away, was taking ten to twelve pills a day because the doctors told her that was gonna help her. She had a stroke, three heart attacks, triple bypass. She started to develop Alzheimer's and was attending dialysis. We did not look into the options of alternative medicine usage. We feel that when we go to doctors, that they know what will help us, because they go to school. They go to years of school, then go to years of learning from other doctors, and we trust their judgment. Today, the residents of our county and across our nation, and across California, will decide on Prop 64 whether it passes or not. But Prop 64 says that it's a recreational use for those that are 21 and over, but it doesn't say anything about medical usage. This is something that I feel that the county, as well as my very own city council, has dropped the ball on. I feel that we should've got ahead of this before this, before we got to the election day, to come up with the list of regulations before it came up. But I can only speak for my city, and as the history that they have of dropping the ball and jumping the gun on things that did not need to be jumped on, this is something that we need to tackle and be proactive right away. Thank you.
Thank you, and good luck in the election, too. That concludes our public comments. We could go to board comments now. Supervisor Bennett, would you like to go first?
Thank you very much. I'd like to have support adjourned in memory of the person on this list, and happy that it's down to only one person. Want to point out to everybody that the animal shelter is having Thanksgiving pet promotion, and $20 pet promotions, all dogs and cats, all the way till 11:30. That's a substantial savings from normal, and people should be aware of that. I was at the pet shelter this Saturday and Sunday, and, you know, there's some really calm, pleasant, large dogs there that have been there for a while, and they just need to find the right home for them. So, wanted to remind everybody that if you're looking for a pet, go to the animal shelter, please, in terms of doing that. We had the fallen firefighter memorial service this Saturday, and with Ryan Osler and the loss of Scott Carroll from the Oxnard Fire Department, and his past year was certainly more meaningful than normal. And then the Boys and Girls Club had a fantastic fundraiser on Saturday night, and that's the Boys and Girls Club that is knocking it out of the park to try to support the three Boys and Girls Clubs they have in the city of Ventura. While we support them, they support the outside of the city, Oakview and Saticoy, they support that, we support them. But as I was there, I certainly felt like an organization that has five Boys and Girls Clubs, two of them outside of the city, really demonstrated how hard they're working to try to raise the funds for the city ones to complement, and then raise additional funds besides what we put in for the county ones. So, really a great organization, and the more I sat there, the more essential I really felt the Boys and Girls Club is in terms of what they're doing with these kids. So, great organization. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Election Day, and a few things that are on the minds of some of us up here today. Good luck to everybody in the election.
Supervisor Long?
Yes, thank you. Let me just first say that, thank you for coming in to speak to the board today. Obviously, we can't speak to what occurred with the law enforcement action on the collective. I, I'm sorry to hear, sorry to hear the impact both to those who worked at the collective, to the pets, to, I just, I think we, unfortunately, in addition to knowing that we have a law for medicinal use, and figuring out how we, as the cities and the county, should be acting to support that law, now, today, we will be challenged with wholesale recreational use. And you're correct, we are behind the curve. And I offer certainly my great concern to you for those who I firmly believe have a right and a need for medicinal use of marijuana. So I hope we can move as quickly, and obviously, this will go beyond our meeting on the, what is it, the fifth, what, six? Six? It will go beyond that study session, and of course, by then, we'll know what the voters of the state of California do today. And I would hope that this board will then move quickly to put in place a framework that is understood by all of the citizens of the county and those who are elected to uphold the laws, and that we can find some common ground. So I, I appreciate you coming today and speaking. I have a list to adjourn in memory of here, and just call out one, Dan Lamano of Camarillo. I've known Dan and his wife Flo for decades. Wonderful man, business in Oxnard, very active with their church, with business groups, chamber, with Rotary, et cetera. And Dan will certainly be missed, already is certainly, by his wife and family. I, too, would like to acknowledge the 12th Annual Fallen Firefighters Memorial Service. Very well done, very moving in the sense of having two names added to the wall, and, but something that is important to do to remember our fallen firefighters, and appreciate how well it was put on and organized. Was very pleased to have been there. I attended yesterday a ribbon-cutting ceremony for Santa Rosa Village and Islands Cafe, our CSUCI. Moving again with significant progress in providing housing. They said yesterday they now are providing housing for all freshmen who've asked for housing on campus. They have enough units.
Well, that's great.
It is great.
Finally, first time.
Yeah, it is. So, the ribbon-cutting took place for that, and also for the Islands Cafe, which has been totally revamped, is very upscale, offers a wide collective of kiosk areas, a variety of foods for the students, and well, for all who are on the campus. Even you can go out there and, and for like $8, just get quite the selection and all you can eat. And so, it was, it was very, very nice to be there.
Even with my low SAT scores, I can eat there?
Yes, you can.
You're up.
They may ask you for more money, I'm not sure. But anyway, it was nice to be there with the university leadership and, and how it's really made great progress. So yes, today is the opportunity to vote on a very long ballot, and certainly, it is not a time to abstain. It is not a time to wring your hands. It is not a time to say, "Oh, I wish, I wish, I wish." It's a time to vote. So I encourage everyone to go out and exercise what is really one of the greatest freedoms in our democracy, and that is to cast your vote, and to, and to have your voice heard and to, again, speak up. Don't sit back and wish you would've, could've. So, with that, thank you.
No, and I totally agree with you. Like Lyndon Johnson said, the first duty of democracy is to vote. There's some really interesting facts they gave me on this, was I thought, a single vote, Rutherford V. Hayes was elected by a single vote by a special commission. Oregon, Washington, Idaho were admitted to the United States by a single vote. And so I think it's real important that everybody's vote counts, but this quote from Abraham Lincoln, "Elections belong to the people. It's their decision. If they turn their backs on the fire and they burn their behinds, then they'll just have to sit on their blisters." In the sense, really, I mean, if, really, if you don't get involved, you can't complain, right? Yeah, and it's, and it's...
He's usually more elegant, eloquent. Lincoln quotes are usually more elegant than...
Yes, but I think he was at the point where this is, this is true. You gotta get going. If you don't do something about it, you can't complain. But I think it's, it's important, and it's a long ballot, like you hear, a lot to think about, a lot of stuff going on, a lot of decisions to make, and there's a lot of stuff democracy was today, people coming up, dealing with their issues, and this is gonna be a big issue for us, the marijuana issue's gonna be big, there's a lot of effects that we, you know, you think about it, you don't realize, I know Mr. Powers and I have been sitting here talking about it, and we, we heard from some farmers talking about, wow, you're hearing all this stuff, they're gonna grow. You, I got a winery, and I hear all this stuff come down in the wine news, and they're worried they're gonna be tearing vineyards out to grow marijuana because of the profits and, and do that kind of stuff. But the other thing is, is when you see it grown in other states, you drive down our roads, you see beautiful crops, they're talking, they have eight- and 10-foot solid walls with turrets and people, and that's how it's grown, because you don't walk out and steal an avocado or, or a pumpkin, you're stealing stuff that's big and expensive, and, and so, there's a lot of issues that we're gonna deal with and how we're gonna have to deal with this thing. And so I hope that everybody gets here on December 6th as we start that conversation, because it's a lot more than what we're thinking about. You talk about dispensaries. Every single dispensary in LA has been robbed, at least once, and some three and four times for, for money and for the, for the product. And so, there's all this stuff, and then there's supposed to be one county in Colorado now that's looking to, they allowed it to grow, and they had all this farming, and one farmer's talking about, they're looking to say, "We don't wanna put a proposition in or a measure in our own county not to let it grow at all, because it's brought so much crime to the locations." So, we got, we got a lot to figure out, and there's a lot of stuff that's gonna go on. So it's, I know a lot of people think, like my wife said, when I got involved in politics, well, everybody has one little teeny issue, but I know as we sit up here, we see a much broader stuff that we've got to deal with. So, I just hope everybody that's here will be showing up on the 6th to start, have their comments and go. So, anyway, I do say, get out and vote, do your thing, and I do want to say, I'm adjourned in memory of the people, people, I'm sorry to say, on this list. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Foy. There are many implications with a vote to legalize marijuana. We have always supported, the board has, for medicinal purposes. But seeing that some of those states, and I think it's Oregon, that the number-one energy use is going for indoor greenhouses, and I just thought that was pretty remarkable of all the types of things a state uses energy for, and that it's being consumed mostly by these greenhouses.
It's a good point, because I also hear, as Mr. Powers and I talked yesterday, there's whole groups now looking to buy up all the warehousing and try to, so they can grow everything indoors, because that way they can control and do that. And so, what does that do to our business community on the other side? But the energy is a big use, you're right.
Particularly in a state where it snows and things like that, which we don't have here. So there is a lot to look at. I would ask that the board close in honor of the two people on this list. One, Leonard Ng, is a veteran, and the other, Lila Clairefield, is mother of Bonnie Clairefield Bylin, and I know, I wish she could've lived to see the results of today's election, which I hear may be a woman president. And I've got my pantsuit on. Do you got your pantsuit on? We're wearing our pantsuits, okay. A couple of items, I was able to attend Many Mansions Bowls of Hope. It was really a hopeful thing to see so many people come together. Many Mansions helps to provide homes for people who are homeless, people who are very low income, and it was just great to see so many people there supporting them. And also attended an event for MANA, which is kind of the East County equivalent to Food Share. They provide mills, and they're looking at moving into a larger facility so they can start providing more mills. So I think that was great, and I wish them best in their Capitol campaign. It is Veterans Day on November 11th, and it was, you know, wonderful to have our veterans here. I'll save my comments, because I know we also will be honoring it at our 10:00 AM time certain. With that, that concludes my board comments, and I'll go to our CEO.
Thank you, Chair Parks, board members. Just a couple of quick items. I was fortunate to be invited by GSA Director Dave Sasek to their All-Hands Service Awards, and was able to, with him, give out awards for about 470 years of service. And it's just really remarkable when you hear the individual stories of the commitment and talent of the people that we have here, and also notable how many of them are veterans themselves, including Mr. Sasek as well. So, very nice event, David, thank you. Great energy. Also met week before last on the winter warming shelter with the cities of Oxnard and Ventura. We'll be bringing that item to your board next week to talk about possible funding, as well as to hear from the cities their plans to develop permanent shelters, year-round shelters in their cities. Then lastly, I would just say, in terms of veterans, I know that our Continuum of Care Board is working with community organizations, veterans, organizations, cities, and the county to end homelessness for our veterans, and they made a lot of progress, but there's work yet to be done, and I know that that's a real focus of theirs. And with that, I would just say thank you to our brave and selfless veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, then we can go to our regular agenda, and that would be item 16. And this is a, I'm sorry, not 16, my mistake, 23, right? Right. We don't go in order of number here. We go to regular items and then time certain. So, item 23, Chief Lorenzen, thank you for being here.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers, for the record, Mark Lorenzen, County Fire Chief. Before you today, we are looking for your approval for us to extend our contract with Tri-Tech. They are our CAD vendors. This is if you have been over to our dispatch center. This is basically the system that is the backbone to the closest resource, everything that, that runs and dispatches our emergency responders, whether it be fire or EMS, to the scene of emergencies. It's an incredibly powerful system, has proven to be very, very good for us, and we're looking for permission and approval to extend that contract for five more years. Any questions?
I wonder about the, I guess you'd call it interoperability with LA County, and it seems like that would be a really good thing to have, this quick kind of dispatch for our, that are right along our borders, so we can share.
It would be. We are currently in discussions with Santa Barbara County, who has the same CAD vendor, and we are talking informally with LA County and LA City to do the same thing, so that at some point in time, all of our systems will be truly interoperable, and we can do exactly what we do here within our county, and that is always dispatch the closest resource for the benefit of our communities, both communities and citizens.
Can I just say that particularly the fire departments throughout the state have such incredible coordination, that this is the one thing that I think we need to pop, so hopefully we'll get there. We have a motion from Supervisor Foy, second from Supervisor Long, if we could all please vote. Thank you very much. Our next item is item 24. This is with our healthcare agency on the Community Health Center Board. Center Board.
Good morning Chair Parks, fellow board members and CEO Powers. My name is Renee Higgins, I'm the chief operating officer for the health care agency for primary care services for ambulatory care, and I also wear another hat of the medical examiner, I'm the interim deputy director there. So it gives me great pleasure in presenting to you the first annual activity report for the Ventura County Community Health Center Board, which I'll refer to as the CHC Board. This board actually oversees all 19 federally qualified health centers, which I'll refer to as FQHCs in our system. To provide you with a little bit of background, we recently added a new designation to our existing HERSA grant that serves our homeless population. In the past, we operated under a waiver of governance, but with our new E designation for this, that encompasses everybody that the FQ system services, this waiver was lifted. So at that point, we were required to form a more formal board, which is our CHC Board. So in May of 2015, we formed the CHC Board, and in June, your board approved that formation. Do you wanna pass it out? Have you passed it out yet?
Yes, they have.
Oh, okay. So since then, the board has met monthly and has been quite active, and so what you have before you is the activity report, and I won't go into every detail, I'll just touch on the highlights, and you can see the pictures of the board members in that report. So firstly, the board is composed of 11 members, 51% of which are constituents, are consumers of the health center, which are patients of our system. One of those members is someone who has experienced homelessness in their lifetime. 49% is composed of individuals in the community, three of which cannot derive more than 10% of their income from health care, and two that can. The criteria is very strict in the makeup of this board. Initially, in order to acquaint the board with our health system, which is very complex, as you know, we decided to have a series of educational presentations. They included the HERSA grant history. Barry Fisher, the previous director, reported on the entire agency as a whole. We showed a presentation on the annual data reporting, the 19 HERSA regulatory requirements. We showed a presentation on the COPD Catch Grant and what that program does for our FQ patients. And then we had a presentation on the specialty care system that's embedded within all our primary care clinics. So during and after these educational presentations, we also had the medical directors for each FQ clinic come and present their clinic to the board. So over the course of the year, the fiscal year 1516, the board also tended to their regular functions, and this includes reviewing and recommending to your board any significant changes related to the HERSA grant, such as approval for applications or contracts that affect the grant, changes in scope or services, such as adding dental care to our scope. They review the budget, and they discuss short and long-term goals relating to the health center. We call the Community Health Center the 19 FQ and that purview. So they also, the board will also be participating in a county-wide collaborative needs assessment, which is our number-one HERSA requirement. So one of the most important functions, one of the most important additions is our CHC Board Clerk, Susan Whitewood here. She is the Grants Manager for Ambulatory Care, she's currently overseeing about 11 grants, right? And more coming. She has successfully refined this whole process and has gotten us to where we are today, so I thank her for that. And then also our new Director for the Health Center, and that's Johnson Gill. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board, Supervisor Bennett?
What are the terms of these various board members? How long, what are their terms?
They're staggered, they range anywhere between two and four years.
Can somebody give me the list of who expires next and when and all that stuff?
Sure, we'll be happy to.
Send it to my office.
If you'd provide that too, I'd like to see it too.
Yeah, all the offices, yeah.
Also, I was wondering, are there any other questions? I was wondering how you are going about doing the community needs assessment.
I'll let Susan speak to that, since she attended the workshop.
Good morning. The way that we're doing the community needs assessment is that we are working with the Public Health Department, who's also working with RMA as they do their general plan update. We've tagged along with their community needs assessment. I've attended many of the neighborhood workshops. We have our own survey that we've been distributing, and we anticipate having a draft of that in December.
Thank you. I didn't know that was connected with this, but that is a great forum for outreach. I just, that was very fortunate to have those general plan workshops going around, bringing in the community, and then being able to do this assessment. And I think the public enjoyed participating in them too, so I look forward to seeing the results of that. Thank you. Are there any other questions, Mr. Powers?
Not a question, but a comment, first of all, you may have seen in the letter, these centers take care of 120,000 patients, not visits, but patients, so it shows the huge impact.
About 400,000 visits just for the FQs alone.
Right. So that's, it just shows the impact, and that's actually probably understating it, and 12,000 of those are homeless per the HR, per the HERSA definition, which is broader than the HUD definition, but I think it really shows the impact. And then I would also just like to thank the commission members who are there, and Dr. Higgins for setting this up, with Susan and Johnson and everybody who worked on it. It's a lot to put this thing together, to create it from scratch, and there's a ton of regulation, so, but being federally qualified is so important to the future success of our system. The reimbursement and the scope of services, talking about whole-person care, medical, mental health, alcohol, drug, you name it, this is exactly the direction we should be heading, so thank you for the caretaking of that. And then also a special thank you to Mike Sedell, former Simi Valley City Manager Emeritus, who just about every time we need him for something, he sits, he sits on the board and just brings instant credibility to it, and just does a great job. We're very lucky to have his service and all the commissioners.
Thank you. We do have a motion and a second, if we'd like to vote. She'd be great.
Oh, yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll go then on to item 25, got continued, correct?
Yes.
Yes. We do have 31 that's been added to the agenda, and this is regarding...
Yeah, correspondence, 30. I'm sorry, I think I had 30.
We do have 30. We could do correspondence, if you're good with that. Let's go ahead and do correspondence first.
That's right.
To the best of our ability, we'll try to keep this in order.
Mr. Powers, when you asked Johnson to stand, step up, did you tell them that they can't, we're, use the word no when they offer all these boards and things to be on, or?
That's right. I knew I forgot to tell him something. Sorry.
Thank you, and that passes unanimously. Now, can we go to 31?
Yes, wherever you wanna go.
Alrighty. And this is a letter that we're looking at sending, thank you.
Thank you Chair Parks, board members. Wanted to talk about our Gold Coast Healthcare Plan, which your board helped establish a little over five years ago. And they actually did just have their five-year anniversary, and a lot of great work has been done. They've come a long way, there's 210,000 members on the plan now, which is probably one of the largest health plans in the county, and mostly for medical and the underserved, so, and they're getting great access to care, and the dedicated and caring staff of Gold Coast are really doing a great job of making sure those services are provided. And so there's a lot of good things going on. Financially, they were struggling for a while, in fact, your board helped by loaning them $7 million for their reserve, they've been able to pay that back, and now their reserves, knock wood, are very strong. And so financially and clinically, a lot of good, great things going on there at Gold Coast. There do remain a couple of areas of concern from our office, and I believe from your board, and so we wanted to bring those to your attention today. And about a little over a year ago, because of some concerns about reports of the lack of sensitivity of cultural diversity in the workplace there, and including some allegations of racism, your board actually changed the Gold Coast ordinance to require a, the development and the implementation of a diversity program. I'll hand it out here. Thank you very much. And that required several things, a development of a diversity program, the appointment of an independent diversity officer to report directly to the commission, as well as to replace the residency director's seat on the commission and nominate, include our county HR Director, Sean Otten. In addition, the chief diversity officer was, as I said, supposed to be independent, reporting directly to the commission, and to provide quarterly reports to your board through your, our office here, the county CEO's office. And so to date, we have not received a comprehensive report on the status of the program, and so that's one of the items that we're asking your board to, want to raise to your board, and suggest that it may be appropriate to send a letter to the commissioners and the plan to let them know that this remains a high priority for your board, and there's work to be, work to be done there. In addition, as your board is well aware, there's a corrective action plan that was imposed on the plan, I would say around 2012 or so. A lot of work was done by the plan, by our office, to work through those elements, and I believe that the vast majority of the elements have been resolved as of 2012, 13, and there do remain some outstanding. And it is our hope that the plan will work to satisfy those conditions and work to remove the corrective action plan, because it is, we think it's justified, because the plan is in strong shape, and we believe having that cap in place is inhibiting the ability of the plan to move forward with other, of its operational plans and agreements, and one of those, of course, being the America's Health Plan. And then lastly, just to bring to your attention, of course, as your board knows that there was a recent report of a lack of diversity in the workplace presented by LULAC that is being investigated, and we're awaiting those reports. So we just felt it was time, particularly since it's been a little bit over a year since your board directed that a diversity program be developed and reported on, that we bring this to your board and have that discussion. So happy to answer any question, and Mr. Otten is here also, who serves on the commission, to provide some additional information.
Comments, questions? Supervisor Long?
Perhaps the supervisor could give us a little insight too, if he wishes to, but my question is related to the cap and that we're, and now obviously it's performing strongly, there's evidence of that. What would be a realistic timeline if we were to add that into this letter, asking that they take action to get this cap lifted? I mean, it sounds like by now it should be done.
Right. That would be our hope. I would say, what we would request is that there's a plan, so we can see a plan, what are the steps that are gonna be taken to work with the state to remove the cap. Really, it's ultimately, of course, up to the state in their discretion and whether they feel it's appropriate. And the state's been, just to comment, the state's been very fair, I believe, with the county and with the Gold Coast Healthcare Plan. Several years ago, they gave us the opportunity to work through those issues, they haven't done that everywhere up and down the state, often they've stepped in, they didn't do that here, they let the county and Gold Coast work to resolve those issues, and so we very much appreciate the state's efforts in that. But really, what we're looking for is just a plan of action to remove the corrective action plan, and just to see, feel to see it and know that it's really being treated urgently.
And I did hear yesterday that they're going to, supposedly there's gonna be a meeting the first or second week in December at the state, trying to get a clarity exactly what are those exact issues. Because I think we've been hearing things that are a little ambiguous on some, some are in writing, some aren't in writing, that kind of thing, and we wanna just get it cleared up, so we know exactly, and then they can report every month at a commission meeting what those steps have been done and how clear we are, because at some point, like I said, originally it was, well, you gotta get this financial thing in order, now there's millions, hundreds of millions of dollars above what is even needed. And so that is that. So I think that that's where, I know that what I heard yesterday is, we're gonna go up there and get that clarity, and I think it's in response to a lot of what the boards wants to see too, so hopefully we'll hear that, and we'll get rid of some of the ambiguity on, because they're talking about consistency of management is what we, right Sean, I think we've heard that. Okay, what does that mean? We've had our COO there, has been there three or four years, we've had some other people, CEOs now, they're almost two years, so what is, okay, what does consistency mean? Because in some of those high-level positions, those people move around, so I'm not sure everybody has five or eight years with their CEO in one place or their COO in one place, so it'd be nice to get some clarity on some of that, and that's what I hear is coming down, and I think that's what this kind of, the letter also can get that back, saying, please give us that clarity, what did you find out, what did you know? So since we know that there's going to be a meeting, we could hopefully by the end of December, or some middle of December, hear back, maybe by our last meeting, or at least the first meeting in January, what happened.
Supervisor Bennett?
Just a few comments. One, just on the issue of the ambiguity of the phrase, consistency of leadership, I would hope just that we, if there's, if there is a report that that's, that the state has some concern in that level, that's something that ought to be expressed in writing. If we're talking about consistency of leadership on the Board of Supervisors, it's not the Board of Supervisors should tell us what somebody meant when they said that. So anyway, I would hope that from that standpoint. The other thing that I would, I just wanna bring up is that, you know, when you create new entities, and that's what basically has been created here, when you create new entities, everybody's gotta make a good faith effort to try to make it work, and it's a little, you know, it's not 100% clear exactly what the role of the board is, exactly what the role of, you know, of the new entity is, and, you know, what's the oversight? And I would just encourage everybody to just make it work. I think the board has made a reasonable request and has been reasonably patient in waiting. I would hope that there would just be cooperation, give us a report, you know, there's some of those simple things, and even if somebody thinks, it's not 100% clear that we have the right to ask for this or that, this isn't the time for us to be staking that out, this is the time for, for basically two entities that have a real commitment, and I think that it's a professional commitment on both sides to try to take care of these people, to just find that common ground and, you know, and sort of almost bend over backwards to make it work, you know, for everybody.
I think, I think that's a good way to say that too. At the end of the day, hopefully this will be kind of behind us and the board, it just moves on like the other counties that have their plans, just run and do their things, and we won't have as much of that, but I agree with you, everybody should bend over backwards.
And just from an outsider perspective, knowing that the Board of Supervisors has asked that they have this diversity program, and that there's a report back to the full commission, and that has not happened, and in the intervening time, there has been even more charges of racism, I think that, you know, there, I'm disappointed, quite frankly, that there hasn't been a strong effort to address it and to keep the board apprised.
Yeah, we did interview some people, some people said they'll take the job, then at the last minute they backed out, so they hired a outside consultant to kind of do that, I'm not sure how well that worked out, and, but there wasn't, but we still could've had some reporting and all the things that should've been done, I think, in that same time, we didn't. No matter who you hire for a consultant, you have a person there, you've still got the requirement to report, we should be doing that kind of thing.
And that hasn't happened, and you do have heightened concern, heightened sensitivity on that, and it seems something that we should be moving on, particularly when we've given that direction, it hasn't occurred. As far as the good reserves they have, again, from the outside perspective, you're hoping that's gonna go into services, so that's the goal.
I think on the diversity request this board took action and asking, and I understand here what you're saying, and I've heard that that's an issue, but to continue to move forward, to take the action necessary, because the perception becomes reality, and the public that's being served and the concerns being raised, both with the internal operational side of the house, and how that may reflect out in the community is damaging, and it needs to be acted on as soon as possible.
And particularly, I'm sure that a good, you know, amount of people, they serve our people of minorities, and, you know, that just makes it even more important that this is immediately nipped in the bud, and I'm not seeing that happen. Okay, so I appreciate the CEO's office bringing forward this, because I think it is something that we care about strongly, and we wanna see some more work towards this. If we could please have a motion in a second?
Somebody said something about adding something extra to the letter, I was, I was, is there something different that you wanted to?
Regarding timeframe, was it?
Yeah, just a timeframe to get an answer back from the state to resolve whatever issues are there. I don't know if it's necessary, if you feel that this will help to move that along, it just, we, the board shouldn't be sitting here six months from now and dealing with the same issues.
Right. I think on the corrective action plan, I think the letter's pretty clear in terms of what it expects, and we wanna work cooperatively with Gold Coast to get that corrective action, to get their plan in place to deal with the corrective action plan, so I think they'll do that. And just, the... And just the mere fact that you're reiterating the importance that this diversity program is of the highest importance to your Board, I think will send a strong message.
Thank you. We do have a motion in a second.
So clarification, ma'am. Is the motion to modify the letter, or is the motion to approve the letter as submitted?
As submitted.
Thank you, Board members.
Thank yous. Who has, whoever has not voted, please vote. Okay, that passes unanimously. And we have 10 minutes or so before our time certain at 10:00. Shall we just take a quick recess?
Sure.
Thank you.
The poll is right around the corner. I'm behind it.
We're back from our short recess at our November 8th meeting, and our 10:00 AM time certain is celebrating Veterans Day. And I know Mike McManus is here, and we have a resolution. If you'd like to come up to the podium. This is a resolution proclaiming November 11th as Veterans Day here in Ventura County, but it is everywhere in our good nation too. Whereas the Ventura County Veteran Services Office is a county organization that gives a voice to veterans, advocates on their behalf, honors their military service, and supports veterans' families. And whereas the Veteran Services Office was established in 1937 by the Ventura County Board of Supervisors to provide assistance to veterans and their dependents in obtaining benefits from federal, state, and local agencies. And whereas Veteran Services Office staff members also understand the laws that have been passed by Congress in the interests of veterans and their dependents, and apply specialized knowledge that best suits the needs of every individual veteran. And Veteran Services Office staff have assisted Ventura County veterans and their dependents in receiving over $6.2 million of earned federal benefits in the form of compensation and pension just in the fiscal year 2014-2015, with an economic impact of over $18.5 million. Staff also processed 585 college fee waivers for students of disabled veterans, a 28% increase from 2010-2011. That's great to see. And whereas on November 11th, 2016, Veterans Day is celebrated to commemorate the bravery and sacrifice of all men and women who have served our nation in uniform. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim November 11th, 2016, as Veterans Day and takes great pleasure in honoring Ventura County's Veteran Services Office staff members and our wonderful veterans and the valuable services they have given to our country. So I'll come down and present this to you and welcome your comments.
All right. Thank you Supervisor Parks, members of the Board of Supervisors, Mr. Powers. Thank you for your continued support. Veterans Day is intended to honor and thank all military personnel and veterans who have served the United States. Our veterans have answered our country's call and have served with honor. Each American should pay tribute to these men and women who exemplify strength, courage, and selfless sacrifice. We must also recognize military families for the strength that they demonstrated every day while they overcame unique experiences and challenges. As we celebrate Veterans Day, every American should recognize that the freedoms that we enjoy today and every day are not free. Veterans have ensured our freedoms through their sacrifice, their commitment, and a willingness to endure hardships, with many making the ultimate sacrifice to preserve our nation for generations to come. On Veterans Day, we should pay tribute to our veterans, the fallen, and to their families. As a veteran and American, I would like to personally thank all fellow veterans and their families for their service and sacrifice to our great nation. This country owes a profound debt of gratitude to our veterans, and we must follow through on the promised care and benefits that they have earned. Every day should be Veterans Day. Now, there are numerous ways that we can support service members and veterans in general. And in case you're wondering what some of those ideas might be, don't worry, I have several suggestions for individuals. You could certainly donate. It's not hard to do. Every little bit helps. Some of the organizations that you can donate to are the Ventura County Military Collaborative. And Kim Evans is the Executive Director, and she's going to provide us a little more information here in just a bit. You could donate gas and grocery gift cards to the Veteran Services Office, so that we can help veterans who come in with some of their more urgent needs as we prepare, you know, some longer-term assistance for them. You also have some of the College Veteran Resource Centers. You also have Rains of Hope, which provides equine therapy for veterans with post-traumatic stress. And Sam is here, and she's going to speak a little bit about their program as well. Now, individuals could also reach out. They could volunteer to visit a VA hospital. They could go to Oxnard Family Circle, Adult Day Healthcare, their veterans program, and certainly donate there. There's also the Cal Vet Veterans Home, that's in Ventura. Individuals can also participate in Veterans Day events, and they can say a simple thank you to any veteran or military member that they see. Certainly encourage individuals to show the colors, fly the flag on November 11th. Now, last year, Governor Brown, he signed legislation that required the California DMV to offer special driver's license to veterans. So the license has a veteran marking indicating honorable service in the Armed Forces. This new program went into effect Veterans Day, November 11th, 2015. And the word "veteran" is basically printed on an original renewal or a duplicate driver's license or state-issued ID card. So veterans can contact my office, and I left flyers out in the vestibule there, so that they can basically, if there's ever a question, they can show their driver's license and show that they have indeed served honorably in the Armed Forces. Now, as a grateful nation, we should appreciate, by working to meet our obligation to honor our service members and veterans, and help them care for those who were injured in service to our country, we must also honor and remember those who have died and for those who are still unknown. For those county employees who are also veterans, family members of those veterans, I'd like to thank you for your courage and your sacrifice and your willingness to continue to serve our great nation. So thank you again to the Board of Supervisors, all of those that are in attendance today for honoring our heroes, our veterans. Now, the Veteran Service Office certainly doesn't do what we do alone. We have a lot of very good partners, two of those today we're going to hear a little bit more from. And one of those is Kim Evans, as I said, is the Executive Director for the Ventura County Military Collaborative. And we also have Sam Balazak. All right, very good. I was practicing outside. And she is the Program Director for Rains of Hope Equine Therapy. So without further ado, I'd like to invite them up to say their few brief comments.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I am Kim Evans. I'm the Executive Director of the Ventura County Military Collaborative. I am also now a spouse of a veteran. We were active duty until last year. After 26 years of service, my husband has retired. So now we are a veteran family. And I just want to take a couple minutes and talk about what it's like to help the veterans and military individuals, families, couples in this county, and how thrilled I am by having the support that we have to do the work that we do here. This is definitely one team, one fight. And we have the ability in this county, with the number of veterans, with the resources that we have, with our County Veteran Service Office, with the Board of Supervisors on board, and all of the support that you give us, to truly take care of any military or veteran or their family members who are in need. I cannot tell you the number of calls I get from outside of our county on how they can replicate the services that we have. We are definitely considered to be a jewel, not only in the state of California, but in the nation. And so I wanted to thank you all for that. I wanted to take a moment to thank our Vietnam veterans of Ventura County for the support that they have given, this tiny little nonprofit that I run, that has now become the largest nonprofit provider of direct military and veteran services in Ventura County. So I just want to take a minute and applaud them for their support. So part of what I'm able to do is, last week, I was on the base for the military retiree town hall meeting. And I met with a woman who had served in Vietnam. She had never found out about her benefits through the VA, through the county, through the state of California. And because of the collaborative nature of which we work here, I was able to direct her and hand her off literally to Tammy Bender at the County Veteran Service Office, because she was there in a booth, two booths down from me. So she was able to talk to this woman and let her know for the first time in 50 years that there are people out there who care about her, that can assist her, that can make sure that we take care of our own. So this isn't just we stand here and talk about it. We're actually out there doing wonderful things, and we do it together. I did also want to mention that we believe in Ventura County, right now, about 25% of our veterans are also law enforcement officers. So we are doing heavy outreach to make sure, especially right now, that they are feeling the full support and are aware of the benefits to which they are also entitled. So that is pretty much all that I have to say, except I am eternally grateful. Every day that I go to work, I get to help other people. And you really just can't beat that. So thank you for your support with that. We appreciate everything that you do. And I'm going to turn it over to Sam.
Hi, guys. So I'm Samantha Balazak, and I am with Rains of Hope. We provide free therapy for, and it's mental, it's mental health therapy in an arena outdoors with horses. So we have licensed therapists. And we provide all of this at no cost to veterans, active duty, and all of their family members. So if they need services, they get to come out to us. We also work with the Santa Barbara Court System. So if they go into the court systems, they actually get to come to Rains of Hope and Santa Barbara at Hearts and participate in their therapy there versus going to jail. We also work with the Santa Maria Court System, and we have a group that meets up there as well. So they get to come out, have the therapies. They also get to meet with other veterans. We work with a lot of active duty that have been deployed, and their family members come out, and then they're able to transition and actually have the person that's on deployment come back, the family's already transitioning with the therapy, and now they could participate as well. We have so many resources out there. And luckily, I get to collaborate with Kim as well and Mike. So if somebody comes to me and they're like, well, I didn't know I had these services. We're actually able to hand them off to Kim, or Mike, or someone else as well. The benefit of the horses, and what I'm hearing from them, is I've had veterans say to me, we were wounded outside. How do we heal indoors? A lot of the military personnel has shared they don't want to talk about their feelings. So the way they're able to do it with the horses is we set up activities. We use metaphors, we use symbols, we have different things that are outside. We set up the activity, and they're able to actually, hands-on, go into the arena and deal with whatever's coming up, and we can help with the coping skills. So it's not just sitting there talking about deep breathing, you're actually doing it. We're not talking about how you deal with the anger in the car when you're driving down the road. We're actually doing it, hands-on. They're smelling, they're touching. We're outdoors, it's very private, we're in an orange grove, so there's a lot of privacy. They're able to interact with other people that have been through the same thing they have, without sitting there and have to re-traumatize and re-talk to themselves. But we're able to also do this adjunctively with their therapists, with their psychiatrists, with the people in the VA. So it's just another extra arm out there to help care for these. Thank you, guys, very much.
And I had one, I was remiss. I really want to take a moment to recognize Mike McManus, because at 5:00 in the morning, I get emails about veterans in this county. At 8:00 at night, I get phone calls about veterans in this county. So I would like to just take one moment, if we could, to give him a round of applause for all of these.
And he comes out and feeds too, and helps us with the horses. And the horse rescue.
Thank you so much. And it is so great to see the collaboration, because it's all about the veterans and being able to provide them the services they need and help that they need, and their families too. So just thank you so much. I know the Board of Supervisors is able to put some funds into veteran services, otherwise we wouldn't have them, right? So it's nice to be able to do that. It's not a requirement, but it's definitely, I think, a duty. So thank you so much for what you do, and I appreciate you being here this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have one speaker card, Carla Castilla.
Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board and staff, and of course, to our incredible veterans who are here in the audience. It's fitting that we take a moment today to really mark our county's Veterans Day, and not just today, as Master Chief McManus mentioned, but every day. And especially meaningful today, because it's Election Day. And these are freedoms and privileges and rights that are given to us and defended constantly every day, thanks to the men and women in uniform and their families that support them. So thank you to the County Board of Supervisors for your investment in our veterans and their families. Thank you to the Ventura County Veteran Services Office and Master Chief. Thank you to Kim Evans, the Military Collaborative, and to Rains of Hope. It's always a collaborative effort and a partnership. And I would just like to especially recognize the members in my family who have taught me the duty to pay it forward, Rex Hernandez and Bill Mousy for being here today, and a couple that couldn't be with us today, Salvador Gonzalez and Nick Gonzalez. I'm just eternally grateful to our veterans. So thank you for this opportunity, and may we use this as a reflection, Election Day, to why our freedoms are so important, and thank the men and women who helped defend that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castilla. We do have another card, Mr. Chavez.
Madam Chair, Supervisors, residents of Ventura County, and staff. So growing up, I was always taught there are order on what you must always respect growing up. First is your religion, second is your parents, third is the military, men and women that serve our country, and then your teachers. I have a tremendous pride in our men and women for giving their lives to protect our Ms. Castilla said it perfectly, that it's a day that, for today, that we need to be thankful for. Because without our men and women serving our forces, protecting our freedoms, democracy won't be here. Not too many people know, but growing up in high school, I participated in the Navy JRTC program. Four years, and my senior year, I was appointed to the Executive Officer position, which is the second-highest position any cadet can get in the program. I had Marines yelling in my face during inspection. So I know for sure you don't mess with a Marine, cadet or no cadet. But it was a, truly an eye-opener. And after that experience, I did decide to enlist in the Army. But unfortunately, I didn't make it, because I had fractured my hand three months before actually swearing in and going to boot camp. So that wasn't something that I was able to participate in. But a few months, I believe about a month ago, I was able to attend the POW MIA presentation that they did here at the county building, which was very moving. And it was truly an eye-opener to see and hear all those names read off, and to see the setting up of the table. I have seen that table set up, and my wife, I brought my wife and daughter with me. My wife was asking what was going on, and as they were setting up, I was explaining to her what was happening, why the table was being set up. So I thank all of our men and women, the ones that are with us now, the ones that left us, the ones that defended our rights. Many of my family members were former military, have many friends that are currently serving in our forces and that were former. And, you know, thank you is just not enough to express our gratitude to them. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. I do have a resolution, I'll come down there. And maybe we could also join in a photo with all the veterans? Okay, if we can all come down, the Board?
Get up there, man.
I'm surprised you, I, I know.
How about if we all face this way, and then we can have the big seal and stuff in the back?
All right.
Mike, you want to?
Mike, front and center, exactly.
Hold the resolution.
Somebody stand in front of me, please.
I'm going to hide back here.
I'll hide back here.
Is that a unicorn?
I was going to say.
What you want, are we supposed to look at?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Really thank you for what you do. All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming to all of Ventura.
No, no problem. I think we're going to take off.
You too.
Next.
Thank you so much.
Oh, you're very welcome.
I was 48 years younger. Do it again.
Wonderful.
Didn't get this gray hair for nothing.
Yeah, my father-in-law was captain of the Coast Guard. This is Agenda Item 17 and this is a proclamation that the Board of Supervisors will be honoring. And this is the Ventura County General Services Agency Procurement Services, Rosa Sineros, Purchasing Agent Upon Receiving the Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award. And if you could come up? Congratulations.
Thank you.
This is a pretty big award. And I'll go ahead and read it. Whereas Purchasing Agent Rosa Sineros? Tell me.
That's it, Sunny Sineros, that's right.
I'm good, I'm good, all right. Sineros began her 35-year career at the County of Ventura as an account clerk in 1981 and has been promoted numerous times, including her last promotion to Purchasing Agent in June 2004, with the responsibility of the centralized procurement and surplus property disposal for all departments, agencies, and special districts of the County of Ventura. And whereas Mrs. Sineros, Sin- Sin- Sineros, I love that name, has played an integral role in leading the procurement department's drive to achieve and maintain excellence. And whereas the purchasing and materials management profession plays a significant role in the quality, efficiency, and profitability of business and government. And whereas in addition to the purchasing of $264,325,000 in goods and services for 26 agencies of the County of Ventura, purchasing and materials management professionals engage in and have direct responsibility for functions such as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing forecasts and procurement strategies, supervising and monitoring the flow and storage of materials, and developing working relationships with suppliers and other departments within their organization. And whereas purchasing professionals make improvement and important contributions to assure the efficient use of taxpayer dollars by negotiating fair contract rates and providing the efficient service while maintaining the highest standards. And whereas the Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award recognizes organizational excellence in procurement by obtaining a high application score based on standardized criteria, which includes innovation, professionalism, e-procurement, productivity, and leadership in the procurement function. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes great pleasure in honoring the General Services Agency Procurement Services and specifically Purchase- Purchasing Agent Rosa Sineros as one in only 48 counties in the nation and 11 counties in the state of California to win the Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award in 2016, in addition to being the only county in California to have received this award 17 consecutive years presented this day. And I just congratulate you and I thank you too on behalf of the board, but also all the taxpayers in the County of Ventura.
Thank you. You're most welcome. We feel lucky to have you in town, too. So, I didn't know I had to do all this stuff. Why didn't somebody tell me before I took the job? I might have reconsidered. You know, seriously, I understand it's a huge responsibility and I chose, I choose to focus on protecting the public trust, the county, and doing the right thing even when it's not the popular thing to do. I cannot and will not take responsibility for the awards. Our first award came under the direction of Mr. Tom Gill. It was his vision and a tech-savvy Joe Valencia that put us ahead of many agencies, some of which are larger than us with bigger budgets. Procurement staff, past and present, deserve all the credit. My job is less overwhelming because of them, their dedication to the county, and their dedication to excellence. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's the staff back there, all of them. That's why I don't like to do this kind of stuff because then I...
So this was, this was a bit of a surprise to Rosa. Good morning, Board, Chair Parks. Mr. Powers, my name is Greg Bergman and I have the privilege of overseeing the procurement function for the County of Ventura. One of my earliest memories of Rosa is not one of my fondest. We were interested in having some, a public accounting firm come in and do some independent testing of some of our lessies in the Parks Department. So being a former public accountant, figured I have this, I know what I'm doing. I went out and got some bids and ultimately signed a contract for the lowest responsible bidder. Well, it didn't take long for Rosa to track me down, tell me I didn't know anything and especially that I didn't have authority to sign contracts on behalf of the county. Well, that was 14 years ago and not much has changed. Rosa continues to educate me about the policies that her department adheres to and I still don't have the authority to sign contracts. Regardless of the size of the municipal budget, it's important that procurement be conducted in a fair, open, and transparent manner and that awards be made in accordance with federal, state, and local procurement regulations. There's a variety of reasons for this, but some of those are to ensure that we get a lot of competition, which cards against favor, which cards against favoritism, favoritism, and that we secure services and supplies at the best and lowest price possible. This requires a high level of integrity to maintain the public trust and to ensure that we reduce our exposure to vendor protest and vendor lawsuits. There have been no vendor lawsuits in the past 20 years, which I'm proud to say. Great job. But there has been a few vendor protests. In each of those cases, it was determined that policies were adhered to and each of those awards were upheld. Getting back to the Achievement and Excellence in Procurement Award, we have, Rosa's group has 17 of these now. They are quite heavy. We're having to find some different shelving units to be able to support all of them. But there's 17 in a row, which no other county in California has done, so we're very proud of that. Again, this is largely attributable to the direction that's been provided by Rosa, but this is truly a reflection on the procurement team and their accomplishments. So congratulations from the Board of Supervisors, from myself. You guys have done a great job.
I think you can come on down and look at a picture of us. Come on down.
If I may, just real quick, while folks are walking down, I just want to say congratulations, Rosa. And I love your humility, you know, giving it, not wanting to take credit for it, it's the team. You're just a role model of what a great county employee and leader is, so. Sorry, you don't want to hear that, but it's just true. And I'm sorry, after 17 years, I think they just ought to name the award after you. Just to catch the chase.
Well, you know, this is my, probably my last award because I'll be leaving in July, next July, so it's a special one. I'll leave a good team behind who, you know, get another 17 and stay ahead of San Diego. Don't tell them we said that.
All right. Congratulations, thank you.
And some heavy shelving. It is very heavy. So how about we all do this again, we'll place this way and then they'll have the seal behind us and the resolution, absolutely, and you in the middle, please?
Sure.
Oh, that's, that's not easy to do.
Yeah, it is heavy. It is heavy. See, I can't do two.
Would you like to hold this then?
Sure.
Great. Come close.
We can't see you guys back there. Come on. Come in front.
No, 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 no. Are you there? Okay. All right, excellent. Congratulations again. Thank you. All right, good job. Thank you. Good team. Just 10:30 time certain, and this is the annual review of the accounts of funds and those are containing developer fees.
Good morning. Thank you. Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, and Mr. Powers. For the record, my name is Jill Ward, Deputy Auditor Controller. On October 18th, your board was presented information regarding the Ventura County developer fees as required by government code. And I'm here today to ask that you complete the review process, find that there is a reasonable relationship between the fees that are charged and the purpose for which they are committed, and find that the funding and the projects identified and designated as required. And we are available for any questions.
Are there any questions? You're off the hook there. We have a motion and a second, if we could please vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And our next time certain is Item 20, and this is regarding the County Building Code Ordinance.
Seems like I was just here, a couple of weeks ago.
Doesn't it? Like on the same thing, too.
Well, good morning, Chair Parks, Mr. Powers, members of the board. My name is Dave Hanson. I'm a district manager here at the County of Ventura. I've announced myself a few times this year. The item before you today is the second and hopefully final reading and triennial adoption of the 2016 Ventura County Building Code, which adopts certain parts of the California Code of Regulations Title 24 and the model codes forming the basis for regulation associated with construction of buildings and structures in the state of California. This item seeks to close the public hearing process on adoption and proposed amendments to these building codes. To date, we have not received any outside public comments regarding the proposed amendments and those made by council are contained in the final version. Before I continue, I would like to thank the Office of the Clerk of the Board for their assistance and County Council during this process and those who assisted me in preparing this ordinance. To recap, some of the amendments I would like to highlight for the board this morning as I did before, Articles 3 and 4, which would be amendments to the California Residential and California Building Codes. They have remained largely unchanged from the 2013 Ventura County Building Code. A small section of the California Building Code, Chapter 31, Section 3108, has been added and amended into the Ventura County Building Code at the request of the Ventura County Sheriff's Department. As you might recall, this section adds increased seismic design requirements for the installation of new telecommunication and broadcast towers and antennas. These facilities will be critical to first responders in the event of an incident such as an earthquake, such as an earthquake. During our first reading, Chair Parks asked about the difference of, differences in appearance these design requirements might, might have. Although I was unable to locate any, any visual displays of these changes, I did discuss this question with local design consultants and local design professionals who indicated that the increase would be most directly related to the thickness of material, the foundation design, and the mounting hardware of the antennas and how they're attached, which would be imperceptible, virtually imperceptible to the public, much like fire stations. Fire stations are designed as critical facilities and they have increased design requirements as well, but to the, to the general public, they appear as buildings and structures as most others would.
Okay, that, from what I had heard, and I can see that if it's on a building, you wouldn't notice the difference of what the foundation is, but a standalone facility, whether that has all of a sudden, instead of just one pole, it's now got like four legs and it takes a lot wider area. I wasn't sure if that was the case, but I guess we'll be looking at them on a, every time they come before us, we'll have an opportunity to see how they're designed.
My discussion with our engineers, they said that basically they're, most of the cellular towers are monopole and it's just basically, it's the thickness of the, of the material as opposed to the actual size that we're looking at and the, the increased design of the foundation in the ground just to keep them more stable.
And that's, and it is really important. Dr. Lucy Jones was one of the proponents of it with the city of Los Angeles and seeing that that is a vulnerability during earthquakes. We could lose those towers because they're not built seismically, so it's a really good thing to do.
Correct. Right. So I'm sure we will be, we will be looking at these as they, as they come across as new, new structures.
Yes.
Okay.
Are there any questions or comments on this item? This is a second reading, so we have a motion. Is there a second? And a second, if we could all please vote? Great. Did we all vote? One person did not vote. Hmm. Okay, we're all voted. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
For voting day.
Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers, I meant to do, get here before Dave started his presentation, but if I could take a minute of your time, I wanted to introduce to you our new building official. Happy to have Ruben Barrera here. Ruben, if you could join me. Ruben's been with us about a month now. We're very happy to have him here. He's got a lot of experience in the building and safety world and he has hit the ground running and is doing a terrific job already for us. So I wanted to just take a moment and introduce him to you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. First of all, let me just say thank you and I'm very happy to join the Ventura County team. And it's been a tremendous pleasure of working with the staff that I'm working with already in just the few, three weeks that I've been here. And I'm just very impressed with the, with RMA, with the county. And just wanted you to know that I will be working very closely with the building safety team to make sure our buildings are safe, make sure they comply with state codes and that we do a great job for our citizens that come in and get building permits. So I'm really looking forward to working with the county.
Can I ask where you came from?
Well, I've got a varied past. I worked with Los Angeles County for some years, for about six or seven years, I think it was seven. And then I worked with a private engineering consulting firm for two and a half years and the last 25 years I spent with the city of Santa Clarita, where I ran and set up their building department over there since, pretty much since they incorporated back in 1991.
All right. Well, you certainly have the experience. It'll be nice to have new eyes. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Good luck to you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and we, we did have that vote on that one. We have 20 minutes before our 11:00 AM time certain, and so we could go to our closed session item and begin on that if we are prepared?
Sure.
We are prepared, so we'll be back at 11:00 AM. I'm back from our closed session on our November 8th, Election Day Board of Supervisors meeting. Our items now are 11:00 AM time certens. And our first 11:00 AM time certain is the authorization to, of the chair to sign a letter in support for the Pew MacArthur Results First Initiative implementing a systematic approach to evidence-based policymaking within the criminal justice system in Ventura County. Was that your whole staff report I just read? Please do come forward.
I think I should just drop, drop the microphone now, right? Because that was all, it's all there. Madam Chair, members of the board of supervisors, Mr. Powers, good morning. For the record, Patricia Oliveras, Chief Deputy with the Probation Agency. I am here this morning to ask your board to sign a letter of support for the probation agency to partner with the Pew MacArthur Results First Initiative to implement a systematic approach to evidence-based policymaking within the criminal justice system. approach to evidence-based policymaking within the criminal justice system. In 2014, at the request of our Community Corrections Partnership, probation contracted with Eval Core to do two things. One, to determine the recidivism rate of our public safety realignment population; and second, to evaluate the services that we contract for and to see whether or not those services were having an impact in a positive way on recidivism. Phase two of that contract has been completed with Eval Core. We now have a baseline recidivism rate, and preliminary results regarding our services are promising. In April of this year, we were approached by members of the California State Association of Counties and the Pew MacArthur Results First Initiative about partnering. Conducting a cost-benefit analysis of our public safety realignment programs just seemed like the next logical step. At the July quarterly Community Corrections Partnership meeting, the members voted to ask your board to consider a partnership with the Pew MacArthur Results First Initiative. As an introduction, the Pew MacArthur Results First Initiative is a national initiative that works with states and counties to implement evidence-based policymaking. The initiative has been in existence since 2011 and has worked with 22 states and seven counties nationwide. Since 2013, Results First has worked with four original pilot counties in California to help these counties make the most of their limited precious resources by targeting recidivism reduction in the adult criminal justice system. In September of this year, Santa Clara County's board unanimously voted to join, and is now the fifth California county to partner with the initiative. In the four original California counties, Results First has worked with the Community Corrections Partnership to build a program inventory or a catalog of all community-based and in custody programs offered to adult offenders, as well as to project out the expected benefits from the programs offered. The probation agency would like to use these tools to further enhance our ability to make data-driven decisions and to amplify the progress already being made through our realignment and reentry services work. To explain the initiative further and discuss how California counties have successfully implemented this approach, we are joined by Emlyn Struthers with the Pew MacArthur Results First Initiative, and Amalia Mejia from the California State Association of Counties.
Good morning, and thank you Deputy Chief Oliveras for that introduction. My name is Emlyn Struthers, and I am with the Pew MacArthur Results First Initiative. And as Deputy Chief Oliveras mentioned, we are a capacity-building initiative that's jointly funded by the Pew Territable Trusts and the MacArthur Foundation. We work with select states and counties across the country to help policymakers like you engage in evidence-based policymaking, which at its core is about using research to inform decision-making. There's a lot of great evidence out there on what works, and the Results First approach allows you to harness the power of that information to select programs that will produce the best return on your county's investments. As Patricia mentioned, we're currently partnered with five counties here in California, Santa Barbara, Santa Cruz, Fresno, Kern, and Santa Clara. And in order to increase capacity in the state and support additional counties, we've recently partnered with the California State Association of Counties. In just a few minutes, you'll hear from Amalia Mejia, my colleague at CSAC, who will talk more about how other counties have successfully implemented this approach. As a county that continually demonstrates leadership and good governance and transparency, we're confident that Ventura will be an extremely successful partner, and we're really thrilled to be here today. So what problem is Results First trying to address? Results First was born out of a policy challenge of how to achieve the best outcomes for your residents when dealing with limited information and limited resources. From what we know of Ventura County, you're always looking to be strategic with your resources, and you don't want to do something just because it's the way it was always done before. We're seeing that our county decision-makers, like our states, often have limited information on what programs are funded across the county, what each of these programs costs, how effective each one is, and how they compare to each other. To address these challenges, we created a set of tools to help answer those questions so that you can make decisions that are most likely to produce the best return on your county's investments. The Results First approach is a three-step process that brings together the best available information on what works, and helps build capacity in your county staff so that you can use this information in an ongoing way. I'll briefly describe the types of technical and policy assistance that we provide, and then go into greater detail on each of these three core components. Our first tool is the program inventory, which is essentially a list of all the programs that you're currently offering, in adult criminal justice, across all agencies and providers, and additional detailed information on each program. Although this may sound simple, of the 22 states and seven counties that we partnered with, none had this tool available at the beginning of our partnership. The program inventory is a powerful tool on its own, but it also helps populate the information needed for the second tool, the benefit-cost model. By building this tool, you'll be able to weigh the projected benefits of a program against the cost of providing them in your community. Third, and perhaps most importantly, is applying these first two tools to make policy changes in your county. The first tool, the program inventory, is essentially a list of all the programs and interventions that you're offering. In adult criminal justice, this would include all programs offered to individuals under county supervision, whether it be on probation, parole, or in jail custody. Here's a simplified and completely fictitious example, just as a visual. You can see that the inventory lays out what the program is spending in each program area to give you a cross-county snapshot of your current investments. County staff will collect and organize program data, including a basic description, intended outcomes, capacity to serve, and perhaps most importantly, an objective assessment of the evidence available that each of these programs is effective. Understanding whether your programs are effective is a key component of evidence-based policymaking. But knowing where to go to find this information has been a challenge in the policy world. So we developed a tool to make this easier. The first step in understanding whether your programs are effective here in Ventura County is to look to your local evaluations. If you have a local evaluation, that's terrific. You can use that to document a program's effectiveness. However, we know that local evaluations can be costly, time-consuming, and hard to come by. When we don't have a local valuation, we want you to look to the research that's already been done. However, this information can be difficult to track down, and often difficult to interpret if you're not a career researcher. The good news is that there are several national clearinghouses out there that bring together program evaluation literature, summarize evaluations, and boil down the findings for lay audience like all of us. The bad news is that all the different clearinghouses use different vocabularies, methodologies, and sometimes look at different metrics. To address this challenge, we created the Results First web-based clearinghouse. It's a clearinghouse of clearinghouses that brings together the information from eight national clearinghouses, sort of like how you might search for a flight on Expedia or Priceline instead of visiting each of the airline's websites individually. The Results First clearinghouse also covers a number of different policy areas, including adult criminal justice, youth development, child welfare, and more. We then created a traffic light color coding scheme to standardize how the evaluations are being reported. Green indicates that it's a highest-rated program, yellow the second-highest rated, red is rare but indicates that a program actually has harmful effects, and gray means that the program doesn't have evidence to demonstrate its effectiveness. This clearinghouse now has over 1,100 programs and is available on the Pew website. After you've created a list of all your programs, you can compare them against the clearinghouse database to assess whether the programs being implemented have demonstrated, evidence to demonstrate that they're effective. As you can see here, we've overlaid the color coding scheme onto this example program inventory, so you can see how this budget is broken down into programs and levels of evidence. This fictitious jurisdiction is spending nearly 40% of its budget on highly-rated programs. 9% of its programs have been evaluated and don't demonstrate effectiveness, and another 54% are not yet rated, meaning that the evaluation data just isn't out there yet. The program inventory is helpful not only as a tool to see the entire portfolio of what you're offering, but also as a tool to help you plan for the future. Our partners have chosen to use this set of tools to shift resources to increase the number of highest-rated green programs, to decrease the number of programs that don't yet have evidence of effectiveness, and to prioritize evaluations for some of their unevaluated but important and innovative programming. It really is a useful tool that states and counties don't often have available, organized in a way so that policymakers like you can use it in your decision-making process. The information collected in the program inventory also helps populate the second Results First tool, the cost-benefit analysis. For a subset of about 200 programs, you can build on your program inventory work by conducting cost-benefit analysis on programs that have known effects. If you're, what you're doing is using the research on program effectiveness to predict the outcome that a program would likely have here, and calculating what that outcome would be worth in Ventura County. At a 30,000-foot view, the model does three main things. First, it incorporates an extensive national research base. The model is a cloud-based software that includes a wealth of information on effective programs compiled by researchers at the Washington State Institute of Public Policy, who reviewed tens of thousands of program evaluations. Then, using only the most rigorous designs, they aggregated and documented those outcomes into a single effect size, resulting in a very clear prediction of a program's effectiveness. Second, you can then play this scenario out here in Ventura County. Using your local population data, your team can predict what effect those programs would have here. For example, if according to the literature, a program can reduce, is expected to reduce recidivism by 8%, what does that mean here in terms of bed days saved, crimes and victimizations avoided in your community? Third, the model uses your own fiscal data. How much does it cost to provide the program and other state and county services to calculate what those benefits would be worth over time, resulting in a county-specific return on investment statistic for each program in the model? Building on the program inventory, cost-benefit analysis allows you to move beyond having a list of programs, what they cost, and what the literature generally says about them, to projecting what those investments would actually buy for you here in Ventura in the long run. Then, by dividing the benefits by the cost of each, you can calculate which investments will produce a higher rate of return on your county dollar. This table is based on Washington state data. They've calculated that in Washington, cognitive behavioral therapy in the second row produces an 18-to-1 benefit-to-cost ratio, meaning that for every dollar invested in that program, they can expect to achieve $18 in benefits, like avoided system costs to taxpayers such as jail use, as well as avoided victimization, because we know both of these perspectives are really important to consider when thinking about the benefits of reducing recidivism.
So I want to be clear. So the benefits are overall general benefits, not benefits specifically to probation's budget, or?
Correct. There's benefits to taxpayers, and there's other benefits to the general public and to victims.
Got it, thank you.
Also, in rating them, is it the fact that perhaps one program is less expensive that makes it so much more of a high benefit in that ratio compared to one, just apples-to-apples? This one is just a lot more effective, but it's more expensive?
Correct. So in the cost-benefit ratio, you're looking at the benefits and the cost, how those two compare. But the benefits itself, in that benefits column, don't vary based on the cost, if that makes sense. They do incorporate Ventura-specific cost data based on that.
So the ratings would be the highest benefit without, I mean, that column that says ratings, that is the highest benefit?
So the ratings are coming from our clearinghouse. So I can back up to this screenshot here. So the clearinghouse, the green, yellow, gray, and then there's no red programs on that page.
That does answer my question. The ratings that you have on this, the chart that you just showed, is regardless of the benefit, cost-benefit analysis?
Correct. So you can have a program that's evidence-based and proven to be effective, but it does not necessarily mean that it would be cost-effective for Ventura County specifically.
Right.
And we'll get to an example with Santa Barbara.
Okay. And that's why I was just wondering, some things may be expensive, but they are a lot more effective.
Correct. That could be the case.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and this is just one lens of
Correct.
To look at information, and we wouldn't advise that this is the only lens that you take. There's lots of factors that go into your decision-making process, but this is an additional tool.
A very good one, thank you.
Thank you. So the benefit-cost ratio is meant to give you an idea of the county's expected return on investment in that program based on the cost of recidivism in your county. It's not an evaluation of how programs are operating in your county, but it's meant to help you understand the relative investment value of well-run programs based on how effective they typically are. And I would pull all of that back together in the third component of the Results First approach, which is applying these tools to make policy changes in your county. We provide technical assistance to build the program inventory and the benefit-cost modeling, but we also help facilitate a dialogue around your results and your findings. We can help you interpret what these results mean and think through the types of policy questions that they can help you answer. When thinking about how to apply these results, it can be helpful to hear from how our partners are using them. One thing that's really powerful about this project is that it's county-driven and supported by Results First and CSAC. The way that this project is taken on and how you choose to consider and use your results is ultimately determined by you here in the county. Our partners have used these tools in a number of different ways. And with that, I'll turn it over to Amalia Mejia, the Results First Coordinator at the California State Association of Counties, to talk more about the work that California counties have accomplished using Results First.
Thank you, Emlyn. And Darby Carney is here with CSAC as well. We partnered with Results First last fall in efforts to build a technical assistance hub for counties. We understand that 2011 realignment passed a few years ago, but there's still the, many counties are at different stages of how to deal with a different population, so we wanted to make sure that we were providing you the tools to make those decisions. We'll go ahead and start off with Kern County. As you know, Kern County tends to be a very conservative county, and prior to realignment, they were not providing any evidence-based practices. When they partnered with Results First, one of the first initial things they were able to do, they used that clearinghouse that Emlyn just demonstrated a few minutes ago, and kind of used it as a menu approach to select five evidence-based practice and implement them in their jail facility. And this was before they even completed the program inventory or the benefit-cost model. So each county has used the different tools that Results First provides, and kind of uses them throughout the stages that they're at. You don't necessarily have to complete the program inventory or benefit-cost model to make any changes or make any determinations as of yet. Another very interesting thing that Results First was able to bring to Kern County is the breaking of silos. We have definitely seen their probation department, sheriff department, and mental health department really collaborate and work together really well to address issues. So instead of probation, just making a decision on the same population that's going to impact the other departments, they're now talking to each other how they're going to make changes as a county. So this is really a county effort, not just a probation or sheriff department effort. Santa Barbara County, your neighboring county, was one of the first counties to join Results First. And Supervisor Parks mentioned before about being effective, Santa Barbara, when they completed the benefit-cost model, they were able to determine that one of their substance abuse program, matrix program, although it's high-rating, proven to be effective, proven to be evidence-based practice, wasn't it was just barely cutting even with the county, so it wasn't really cost-beneficial for Santa Barbara to implement the program. They've recently switched to MRT, which is still evidence-based practice, proven to be effective and proven to be cost-benefi- well, shown to have a higher return of investment rate for Santa Barbara County specific. Now, that does not mean that for Ventura County, the matrix program would not be beneficial. It just means for Santa Barbara individually, it was not cost-effective for them. And Santa Cruz County, like Ventura County, was already on a progressive trail. So they were instead of needing help on what evidence-based practices means, they needed help in prioritizing funds. So how they were able to use Results First, went working on their program inventory, they actually realized that one of their educational programs that they were providing was not being ran through fidelity. And we understand that in order to have that return of investment that's actually shown in the model, you need to ensure that you're providing that program to fidelity. So they went back and are ensuring that they're providing the program as it is written in order to have that return of investment, which is actually really important. They've actually worked as well with their CBOs to have them at a higher standard of evidence-based practices. They are now you having their CBOs use the Results First Clearinghouse to select a programs that are proven to be evidence-based and effective, as well as ensuring that they're now measuring outcomes so that they can actually provide that and then put them into the model. Now with that, I'll go ahead and pass it on to Darby Kernan. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. I just one yesterday, a lot of questions were why Ventura County is one of the first counties for CSAC and Pugh-McArthur to launch into our partnership. And it really has to do with your leadership. The Board of Supervisors, Kathy Long, Supervisor Long has been a strong advocate and partner in CSAC. Michael Powers has been involved in the CAO and CEO statewide association. Your probation chief is a leader within the CPAC, and your sheriff is a leader within CSSA. You have progressive, hard-working people who help in doing what we're trying to achieve. You are a data-driven organization. Your county works on data. You want to know what works best. And we felt like this would be a great tool to kind of benefit everything else that you're doing and work to kind of show the benefit of this, what we've been doing in the other counties. And that's really why we thought this was a great county to start and work in as our first county in our partnership. And I'm here, and we're all here if you have any questions today.
I do appreciate the fact that you briefed our staffs too, gave a opportunity to have a better understanding through our staffs too. Do the supervisors have any questions? Comments?
Not a question, but certainly a comment, one I thank you for bringing this to the boardroom and and really for all of us to have that early briefing and understanding of of what the the goals are here. And 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 certainly agree with you that I think that the county has, through our Chief Probation Officer and our CEO and our sheriff and 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 our Behavioral Health Director and others, the we work strongly to remove silos, to work across platforms, to share information so that we can measure the outcome effectively. I think it looks like a great tool to be able to use that and the expertise of the of the Pugh Charitable Trust-McArthur Foundation. I hear this all the time on NPR, so now look.
The face behind the organizations.
But also, that's true, being able to gather so much information from the other areas and seeing what works is a real benefit. You know, we find that we have better knowledge from being able to see what our partners are doing. And the more information you have, the more the better the the better it is, essentially. Mr. Powers?
I think it's your pleasure. Just thank you for bringing this here and selecting Ventura County. We are tremendous data nerds here, but we say it with pride because that's how it really influences discussion. At the board level, of course, but also at the CCP. All those safety partners, sheriff, probation, behavioral health, district attorney, the community organizations, they really look rigorously at which programs have the best outcomes, and that's where they dedicate the funds. So this is just a perfect tool for us. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
No, I think the number one thing we should be doing is using everybody's tax law wisely, find the best programs that work. And and I think Supervisor Parks made a good point. Some have they're expensive, but they really work. We got to know those kind of things too. But at the end of the day, there's been a lot of things I think we just sounded good, but we never had the opportunity to measure them to it, and we kept doing. And we didn't weren't getting a different result. And so I'm glad to support this. This is great.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Thank you for the presentation. And selecting Ventura County.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darby. Thank you. Folks coming in here. There's our great leader, Janice Gardner.
Yes. Okay, we'll go to our next item on the agenda. This is our second eleven a.m. time certain. This is a continuation of a hearing on the consideration of an amendment to attract map out in Santa Rosa Valley. I'll just, before we begin, I just want to make sure with county council, while we close the public hearing at our last meeting, it's okay to open the public hearing for new input from people who want to comment?
Yes.
Okay. So shall I do that now then? Go ahead and open the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. I will open the public hearing, and then if we could have the staff report back to now? Yeah, have the staff report now. Yes. And so so we're all up to speed. Sorry to confuse you.
That's okay. No, good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers. My name is Franca Rosengren. I'm the case planner for this proposed map amendment. It's case number PL fourteen dash zero one-three-one. At the November first, two thousand sixteen Board of Supervisors meeting, your board continued the item and directed staff to come back with a recommendation of approval, findings of approval, and conditions of approval of the proposed project. And those items are in the board letter and attached as exhibit two. In addition, your board had some technical and property development history questions, and staff has also addressed those in the board letter. If you have any questions regarding this proposed project and the board letter, we're available to answer those. That concludes.
Yeah, if if you would please go through what the findings were from our last meeting. As I understand it, the regarding the zoning clearance, whether or not it occurred before or after the with the pool zoning clearance, that kind of information.
Sure. Yes, I'll do that. So the recommended actions of the eleven of the November first, two thousand sixteen Board of Supervisors meeting, planning staff recommended that the board take the following actions, which one certify that you have reviewed and considered the board letter and all comments received, and to deny the map amendment based on an inability to make the required findings as approved set as approval is set forth in the Ventura County subdivision ordinance and based on the evidence that was presented in the November first, two thousand sixteen board letter. And to specify that the clerk of the Board of Supervisors has the documents and materials. So the Planning Division recommended to deny the map amendment. The bore your board asked that we do some additional investigation into what exactly happened in regards to the zoning clearance that was issued to the applicant for the project. And we researched that information. The zoning clearance was issued in two thousand and six, so it was difficult to figure out exactly what happened at the public counter when they had that zoning clearance issued, since the Planning Division doesn't keep record of verbal denials of proposed zoning clearances. So
Could I could I just interrupt one second? As I was reading the report, maybe I'm wrong. I thought it was two thousand nine. Was it two thousand and six?
It was two thousand nine in the report last week.
I'm sorry, you're or yes, you were correct, two thousand and nine.
Okay, I just I want to I want to follow this. Thank you.
Yes, okay. In two thousand and nine, a zoning clearance was issued. That's exactly what we're talking about. I'm sorry for the confusion.
And that's the one that had the picture. It showed it on the site plan, but it wasn't in the words.
Exactly. And that's in exhibit, if you had a chance to look at it, exhibit number four of today's board letter. So we looked into it, and the project description did not include a solar panel, a ground-mounted solar panel. And typically, for any ground-mounted construction, it's always included in the project description. We understand that they did show a drawing of it on the zoning clearance, however.
Which was approved, right?
It was approved, yes. And so we don't know at what point they were denied the approval of the solar panels. Was it at the first time they came with the picture of it or later on in the process? We can't make that determination.
Because it was more than likely a verbal denial. And I think was that the question that Supervisor Bennett that you wanted to find out when that occurred? And the answer is you don't know. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the board also wanted us to follow up on the Planning Division's approval of a ground-mounted solar panel located on Lot Three, and whether they had conditions for additional landscaping to screen that ground-mounted solar system. And looking at the documents for that approval, the applicant actually proposed landscaping, landscape screening as part of that project. And therefore, there was not a separate condition specifically for landscape screening. And
Oh, in the in the previous, I'm sorry.
On Lot Three.
Okay.
On the previous approval.
And they and that's that was another question we had. And so there wasn't any mitigation requirement to screen it with landscaping?
No, there was not because the applicant proposed the landscaping as part of their project.
So but there was landscaping that would screen it already as part of the project?
Yes.
Okay, so nothing specific to the solar project, but there still was an overall condition that required screening?
Those are, yes, they're the actually both is correct. So there was already landscaping for the entire subdivision. And and then on top of that, the property owner of Lot Three proposed to do additional landscaping to assist in screening the solar panel. For Lot Twenty, for this one for today, Planning Division's recommendation is that they don't do additional landscape screening because the HOA is already going to be putting landscaping on along the slopes, which the Planning Division feels would adequately not not entirely screen it, but partially screen and blend in with the the landscaping, blend in with the slope.
I don't see the homeowners association representative here today, but it sounds like the homeowners association, it would end up paying for the landscaping that will essentially shield or do some shielding of this project.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions or do you want me to go on to item number three, which page six of the board letter? You wanted us to provide verification that the existing ground-mounted solar energy system had been constructed in compliance with the building code or any regulatory codes?
There is mention in the staff report about the the Solar Act that has occurred in terms of not hindering solar projects unnecessarily. That that's mentioned in your addendum report to us. I don't think we had that previously. Do you see a connection between the state law and what is before us today?
A connection in
A connection in the fact that would we be unnecessarily hindering a solar project by denying the project?
I would like to defer that to county council.
Okay.
Right, yeah. And I I addressed this last week at the hearing. It's it's the county's position that the the state law that prohibits unreasonable hindrance, if you will, of solar energy systems refers to and requires cities and counties to have a streamlined permitting process for the actual solar system itself. But here, we're in the county's opinion, we're we're basically taking a step back, and so we're dealing with a subdivision issue. And so it's the county's position that that specific state law doesn't apply in this scenario. And and as was explained last week, the the county has in fact implemented a streamlined ministerial permit permitting process where we make it really easy for people to install solar systems where they're already allowed. And so that's that's kind of how
Okay.
things fit together.
And one of the requirements for approval today, if we want to approve this, that has been added, is that the HOA needs to change its CCNRs to allow for this. Is that correct?
Yes, and that is actually recommended action number five. Actually, hold on a minute. Yes, in recommended action number five.
And I guess the basis of this, the original concern, was the potential of a visual impact?
It 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 was twofold. Compatibility with the original design of the subdivision and the neighboring properties, as well as biological potential biological problems with having a ton a row of solar panels if other future property owners applied for the same permit.
And the report that was looked at, reviewed, the sequel report, did it show any environmental impact? Certainly not for number three, Lot Three, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And I think the compatibility would probably be mostly based on visual visual impact.
And for for Lot Twenty, the location of the solar panel is directly above a culvert. And so it happened to, it would divert any runoff into the native habitat. So that was one of the analysis that was made, that it wouldn't cause a significant impact to biological habitat, which is directly below. So
And also that culvert isn't exactly aesthetically pleasing, so you already have some kind of a infrastructure there in a sort. Well, we have a couple of comment cards. I know that whenever I see Mr. Barnes, we have to disclose if we have had any further contact with applicants or anything on this site since our last meeting last week. No, they're all shaking their heads no. Okay. With that, then, we do have a couple of public comment cards. Does the staff need to give us any more direction before we begin with the public comment?
I just want to clarify in terms of the the Solar Rights Act and the county's position. I just want to be clear that the the county's position in that regard is only that your your board is not compelled to approve the subdivision act action. But that's not to say that you that you you can't approve it if if you if you deem fit. We're just saying the Solar Rights Act doesn't take away your discretion there.
But it could be a finding towards approval.
Absolutely, and and we've we've written that up for your consideration.
Right. Thank you. I don't think it was mentioned previously, so it's good to have that in the report now. So we do have two comment cards, the applicant and a member of the community. Would the applicant like to go first?
Good morning to the honorable board. This is Kate Nice Wonder on behalf of the applicant. I just put in my comment card so I could answer any questions that might arise, frankly. I did want to comment on a couple of things that were said. There was a question by the chair that the HOA would be paying for the landscaping. Such a little HOA. There's twenty-three lots. So the all twenty-three lots are going to be getting landscaping because the landscaping failed in the past ten years. So they're putting in, so they're paying one-twenty-third of that. So it's not like they're going to be putting their burden on their neighbor. They're not. They'll be paying their fair share. Also, I did, I was really happy that that staff found that map and included it in your packet, exhibit four, so you can see where the solar was on there and how my applicant unfortunately was misled by what happened. While we couldn't get verification of when the pool went in versus when the denial happened at the counter, Roberta Johnson has a very specific recollection that the pool went in, then they sent their people down to get the permit for the solar, and it was denied. So it happened as we told you last week. As finally, as far as the Solar Rights Act is concerned, I think it's my duty to disagree with county council. I do it all the time. So I do think that the Solar Rights Act applies Solar Rights Act applies here. It's part of the findings. We're not going to make a fuss about it today, but we do feel it has a lot to say, a lot to add to this discussion.
It's historic. There's an attorney in Ventura County that disagrees with our county council.
It's shocking. It's just shocking. But anyway, if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Are there any further questions? No. And then we have a speaker to help clarify the facts. We're always looking for that. Mr. Kevin Cannon.
Hi, my name is Kevin Cannon, Santa Rosa Valley resident, and also a councilperson on the Santa Rosa Valley MAC. I'm speaking for myself today, not the MAC. I did watch the previous board of supervisor hearing during the fall to spring. I had gained an hour, so I had an hour to burn, so I watched it on the video. But I'm not here to oppose or support any position or decision today. I'm here to clarify some statements and explain general, my glasses here, general planning concern. I missed the first MAC meeting where this was discussed. I was told to go view the project from the road. It is plainly visible from the road. There's also a vineyard detained over that ridgeline. And I'm very familiar with the history and the reason for the building envelopes that were on the track map originally. And that history is the developer of the properties had promised Rosemary Allison that the houses themselves would not be visible from the road. So there was a major concern of viewshed protection for that mountain. There was friends of mine that lived close by that put their house up for sale immediately and moved as soon as the top of the mountain came off. So that is history there, that there was this big concern for viewshed. That's the reason, I think, for the building envelopes. So that's why they're on the track map, in my understanding. And the other development mitigations that seem to occur, and one's going to happen today, is we'd like you to put something in the CCNRs that enforce concerns that the community might have outside the actual HOA. Examples could be manure management things that are always stressed in Santa Rosa Valley for a new tract, and, you know, landscaping in open space. So these things end up being the CCRs. What my concern is, what happens years laters, is it seems like, from viewing this proceeding, that the CCNRs can be changed by homeowners who may not be aware of the longer history of the project. And I'm just wondering, where is the check and balance if it's not a physical thing on the track map? If it's something in the CCNRs, how do HOAs know that? And how do they know not to change it? And how does the county get involved, other than you're going to ask them to do that? But serious things could happen that aren't physical on the property, that the community would have concerns in future years. And it sort of came to light that this is, I don't know, a process that causes things to change over time that we originally had a big discussion on and concerns about, but how do we keep them from, you know, going south on us because certain new homeowners want to do certain things that aren't on the track map? Thank you for your time.
Mr. Cannon?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, so to be, on this particular project, you don't have as much concerns as you have about what kind of precedents could be being set for the future, and how would those be clearly contained by CCRs, by putting on the track map, that kind of stuff? Is that an accurate summary?
That I don't have concerns, or I do have concerns?
You don't have concerns about this particular project?
I'm kind of, I'm kind of torn. I mean, I want to be a good neighbor. I've heard the applicant's story in the one meeting I did attend. And so it's interesting, the MAC didn't get to finally vote on this. But personally, I feel like it's, it happened. You guys are in charge of making sure mistakes don't happen again. So I'm putting the confidence in the government and just here to suggest that maybe take a closer look at what's going to happen on the other properties now.
How to make sure it doesn't happen again is the bigger focus. That's fair to say that's the bigger focus for you.
Sure.
Right, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I could give you rebuttal, if there's a desire to have a rebuttal?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Very briefly, Mr. Cannon's concern about the bigger picture is something we addressed last week, where this is an actual amendment to the tract map, albeit a very small one. If somebody else wants to put solar in, they would have to jump through all the hopes that we've done for the past several years. And that would mean additional environmental review, amending the HOA, CCNRs, and the other issues that we've already discussed. This was kind of a special situation, and the HOA has, I believe you heard from Ms. Pearlheart, the HOA has been in a bit of disarray, and they're finally getting it together now after a long time. I don't see this happening again. I think part of the reason this happened was because the HOA was, in fact, in disarray and just not doing what they were supposed to have been doing for a very long time. That, in combination with the zoning clearance you see as exhibit four, led to the current situation. This will not, in my mind, set a precedent.
Thank you. Go ahead and close the public hearing. I think one of the things that, when you look at whether this is going to happen again, unusual circumstances, having the HOA require they change their CCNRs to address this, I think would be a benefit. And I don't believe they can actually get approval of this project until they do get that. That's part, they'll still be in violation, as I understand, because that is a requirement. But the other thing is, is that this is a ground-mounted, because it's a water heater, essentially, for the pool, as opposed to one that is lighter weight and you can put on your roof. So I think that also makes it kind of an unusual situation. How many others are going to want to do this exact same thing? I have seen testimony that has been to the opposite of what Mr. Cannon's saying, that the individual drives by there all the time and does, cannot see them. So I don't, I, also that we mailed the entire community around there at the request of the MAC, and no one commented negatively. So I'm not seeing this as an outcry in terms of being a blight, but more in the question about the process. And I know one of the concerns I had was that if it doesn't have any environmental impact or scenic impact, you know, still removing it because of essentially a glitch in the process seemed to be overly heavy-handed. When I see, and I, it isn't, when I see an approved tract map or site plan, rather, that actually shows the panels on it marked approved, I can see where they thought that they had an approval. It's a pretty bold thing to do, to put on a site plan, you know, a structure to begin with. They could have just not had that on there. So that also kind of calls into question the, whether they felt that they had the approvals or not. They certainly didn't have a building permit, and that is something that also would be a requirement, as I understand it, if we approve the allowance for it, obviously, after the fact. But I'm, you know, want to hear from others and what you think regarding this.
With what you, what you said.
Yeah, I had the concern last week that if they went to the counter, they were told no, and they said, ah, hang it, we're going to go do it again, we're going to do it anyway. But this is, this has a lot more, a lot more twists and turns in there. And I feel satisfied that it's, we're not reinforcing just blatant defiance out there. And so with the safeguards that are out there, that's the second issue that I had concern with. And so I'd be fine with what you're proposing.
Okay. My appreciation to staff to reviewing this, looking at how to get a handle so it doesn't become an issue that happens again, and being able to put some conditions in place for this. With that, I'll go ahead and approve the new recommendation by staff with all the findings provided this time.
I'd say, Kim, your people always do a great job, so thank you.
Thank you for attending, Mr. Cannon. Nice to see you. So I think that concludes our board meeting. We have an APCD meeting, and we have further closed session for which we may have an announcement. Is that right?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I have one announcement from the earlier closed session, and that was item 29, Santa Clara Waste Water Company versus County of Ventura. And the board authorized county council to file an appeal in that case, appealing the denial of the county's anti-slap motion. And the vote of the board was four to zero. As to the other matters on the closed session agenda, I do not expect any announcements on any of the other matters.
Okay, so our board is now going to go into closed session, and then we will adjourn from closed session. Thank you. Make sure everybody votes today.